You are watching Access to LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the February 14th meeting of the Michigan Shores Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting at www accesseslaporte county.org.
All right, it is currently now 7 o'clock and I'm calling the meeting to order. Let's stand for the first.
Recording in progress.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, for which it stands one nation, united in the principle with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. John, please do re-call. President Dumbrus?
Present.
Michael Martinez? Paxton? Ralph Fox?
Present.
Sam Paxton? Rich Young?
I'm here.
I'm here. Attorney Brad Danz, Danzky?
I'm here.
Fire Chief Gary Bendix?
Here.
T H Chief Mike Swestex?
Present.
Park Board President Dolly Milik is absent. B Z A President Matt Bones absent. Building Commissioner? I still have you listed as code enforcement slash Assistant Building Commissioner. I've never been changed, so that's what I'm going to use. Deb Cho?
Here.
Flood Plan Minister Ray Dumbrus? Absent.
Absent.
Plan Commission President Ralph Fox, we know you're here. And Website Samantha, she is absent. Okay, thank you very much, Joan, for taking care of that. I would like to have any kind of comments on the meeting agenda. Are there any questions, corrections, you know, to the agenda?
I regret to inform you that I have any corrections or additions.
Okay, thank you. We do have the one that listed that where I added the third, the ordinance regarding the code enforcement officer. Okay, very good. Okay, excellent. If there are no...
There was a third revision?
It was the second revision, not the third. I added that it's under...
There's three different ones?
Oh, yes, there's three different ones. One went out at 4:40 something over this afternoon because I had not added. So all you will do is we'll add one in for you.
Add where?
Under resolutions, it's B. It takes the place of the current B. The others will move down. That's the ordinance regarding the code enforcement officer slash Building Commissioner. Okay? Then the other two move down to C and D. Okay. All right. So I need a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Motion to accept.
Okay. Sam?
I will say so.
All right, on favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay, aye. Thank you very much. Michael, we just voted on the agenda. Okay?
Do you want to make a sign?
Yeah, yes, we do.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, so the ayes have it. Okay, we move into the number four, the MS4 presentation by Reggie Porfalls. So I met Reggie when I went to the one of the first meetings of NiSWAG, which is Northwest Indiana, and then you're going to have to give the rest of that.
Northwest Indiana State Modern Advisory Group.
There we go.
These are the municipalities that are permitted under the MS4 permit, the Light Quarter and Report Academy. It is a group that gets together so that they're able to work permit compliance, minimum control measures, and they support each other. Right now, I'm trying to move that program under the relevant U.S. University Northwest, and they will be able to help these communities with grant writing and some compliance work.
Okay. This is great because we have, Reggie can give us some more information. I invited her here to give sort of a presentation to the town council because there's a lot of information on it. This is not a choice that, it was not something we asked for, but this is a determination that had been made by LaPorte County. We are included now as an MS4 designee and have to make a final decision by mid-April, I believe. So we have the option of accepting this and moving forward. It is not a large investment for a five-year period, or we have the option of asking to be, for a waiver, to completely get out of all of this. And I believe the third option would be if we tried to hook up with one of the other communities that may be near us with regards to the work that they're doing. So Reggie's going to give us more of an overview on all of this, in a much clearer manner than I did, so please, Reggie.
Thank you. This is for you to look at, leave it to me, make copies. This is the overall permit. Let me give you a little background. The MS4 permit was generated through Clean Water Act. So it is a federal mandated permit. It hands to the state. The state implements the permit in the water quality through the stormwater section. For 2015 years, I ran that program at IEDM, and I retired, and then I did retire. So I'm working now with communities. I work with Long Beach, how I retire from Michigan City, trying to work with LaPorte County, and trying to get everybody on board. What this permit requires is that you find ways to eliminate stormwater runoff and pollution from your land areas into waters in the U.S. The safety of your option to waiver the permit or implement. So let me explain a little bit about the choice there. When this first started in 2007, the waiver was extended to most all of the shoreline communities. And then IEDM forgot about it, and they never did anything. Now, the waiver is for one permit cycle, which is five years. So every five years, you will have to request a waiver. That waiver means you have to demonstrate through some type of water testing, water quality examination, that you are not having any runoff into the waters in the U.S. In this case, it would be in Michigan. So that's expensive, it takes a lot of work, and it don't last five years. The other option is to comply with the permit. As a new permittee, you submit a notice of intent, and you have one year from the day you received your letter, which was April 15. So you have until April 15 to tell IEDM whether you're going to submit your notice of intent or you just submit a waiver. If you submit the notice of intent, you have another year to put your program in place. And the thing to keep in mind, that your compliance with this permit is to the best extent possible. You don't implement this permit the way Michigan City has to, or even Long Beach, in the sense that you have different issues here. So putting it together, you develop a stormwater quality action plan, you have water quality characterization, and there are different minimum control measures in the permit that you have to follow. I have explained this before. My opinion is it's much easier to comply with the permit than to ask for a waiver. And this opinion comes from dialogue with US EPA, which is five out of Chicago, is that they're not inclined to give waivers to any shoreline communities because they feel that some way, somehow, you are bringing into Michigan. And when I had the opportunity to look at your overall map, you have a regulated drain that runs through your community, and then you have an area that discharges, even though it's small, into the lake. So putting this in place, there are a lot of options that you can choose. There are minimum control measures that you have to put in place. First one, public education, public outreach, compliance, and participation. There's a lot of ways you can do that. You're a small community, you can do special events, you can do your website, you can do a lot of things to meet the requirement. The next is illicit discharge. And this is making sure that you map all of your outfalls in the community, and then you have to test them every once in a while to make sure that they are not discharging any runoff. You have no, I think this is the only municipal building, right?
Yes.
Yeah, fire station, this. So having a plan for your municipal building is just one, so that's not a big deal. Construction, if the construction is high here, there are construction standards they have. I don't think you have, I drove around the last time I was here, there wasn't too much construction going on. And then the final one is good housekeeping, which is basically looking at all buildings that you ought to operate and have a plan to make sure that they are not discharging. But you don't have that big of an area here. When I was here during the day, going around the fire station, I never really worried about fire stations because they have their own code where they don't really have spills or anything. You have nothing else that you need to worry about. So implementing the permit is going to be a little work, and you have to have someone that's good to do the paperwork and submit things to IEDM, but actually complying with it is at a level that you shouldn't be able to do. Potawatupi Park submitted areas, we're submitting there in our line this week. They're going to focus on, their biggest issue are septic systems. US EPA has come out with some new guidelines. If you have septic systems in your area, how you could manage those, we're going to focus on that. Long Beach has some issues with the shoreline building, and so we're focusing on that. But if you have a small community, it's much easier to reach out to your residents and explain to them what's going on. But sometimes the smaller communities, I know Potawatupi Park was really worried about Friendship Gardens, okay? Friendship Gardens is a private entity and not part of the town itself, so they don't have to worry about that. IEDM to hear that. So it's going to be a decision as to why they want to do this, and there's a timeframe for this, that once we get this knowledge, you don't have to, you don't have to do it really, really fast. You put the notice of intent in, and then this gives you your timeframe for ordinances. You have to have a stormwater ordinance, I don't know if you have any in place now. You have to look at identifying three community-wide issues, and IEDM gives you enough time annually to do that. Ordinances are 730 days, so it's about three years, I think, to put the ordinance in place. And everything else is within a good timeframe. So looking at what is the best action for your community to take to prevent contamination going into the lake, and so that's really what your decision has to be. I can't imagine IEDM approving the waiver, but if that's the way you want to go, you could do that and try and see what they say.
I have a question for you. Sure. You mentioned the main, I guess, potential problem being coming out of White Ditch, which runs through our town, but where it empties into the lake is Michigan, right? So...
I have a lot of...
I don't think that does impact us because there's, I'm assuming White Ditch goes into Michigan City or Long Beach or...
Yeah.
So how do we control what happens ahead of us and behind us?
You have to look at where the, I would have to, any surveyor doing the map would look at the route it takes, the chances that if a spill goes into that ditch or discharge goes into that, where it's going to go. If it goes on the other side of the state, Michigan is also an MS4, and all you have to do is identify. At this point, it leaves our area, and we're not responsible. If it goes into Michigan City or another entity, then you work with them to say, if we have a discharge, we'll work with you on that. I tried to do some research before with the county surveyor on your regulated drain, and I didn't, I didn't get too far. And then they had an election, and I still didn't get too far. So I need to probably go back, and you would have to do that if you wanted to do that, see. But examining it, walking it, having a map is something that would need to be done. The key with this is keep in mind, this is a federal permit, and if you wager it and they grant it, you have no problems. If you apply for the permit, it's given to you, NOI. If you don't implement the permit, that's where you start to have problems because of the limited fee of your federal highway dollars or your state regarding the funds. So make a decision whether you want to or whether you don't. You know your community better than I do. If you have a lot of rentals where people move in and move out, sometimes that will impact how you educate people on the permit because you have the landlord and you have the renter, and that could be an issue. But those are things you could address as you go along. Some communities, Potawatupi Park is looking at implementing a stormwater fee. They're still, still in dialogue, but if you're familiar with Baker-Terry, okay? They did a root study for me for the entire state, and what we found was the best success we had with implementing a stormwater fee is through your property tax, not a monthly utility bill, tack it on to being paid twice a year. But you have to determine if you need it. I don't know what your budget is and whether you have local funds to do it.
If the town were to vote a notice of intent round, that year still gives them time to look at options as far as whether they would work with other communities.
Yes. Here's the thing. Back in 2007, when we started this, LaPorte County said, we're going to have, everybody work together, we have a co-permit, and the county will kind of manage it. Well, what happened was the county put the regulatory authority of that permit into the Office of Beast, not Stormwater, but the community, it's like a community program, and they can't do that. So they had a lot of trouble getting the smaller communities to implement the permit because they thought it was up to the county. The county thought it was up to them. So this time around, when they had to issue or implement their new notice of intent, they asked me what they thought they should do, and I said, you need to do your own permit. So now each one of them has their own notice of intent, each one of them is doing their own program. However, if they want to work together, and we're looking at this as a possibility, they come together with memorandums of understanding. There is a pot of money in the county council's revenue that is about $80,000. My recommendation to the commissioner is that money be used for countywide public education program. It's too hard to divide that money up as to who paid it, and over the years, there's no record of it. It basically was the city of LaPorte, Long Beach, Trail Creek, and Michigan City that were paying, and then tried to get something back, people doing the work, and it didn't exactly track.
Michigan City was three from our first, so LaPorte County was the fourth.
Yeah. Michigan City, when Michael Kuss came in, he asked me for his own permit, so I issued him his own permit. And now they're thinking about if we could coordinate some things together, they might look at that. There's all these ways that you can take your budget, take a look at what you have, and remember, the permit says to the best extent possible. And that means funding, people, anything else that you want to do is how you would put it in.
Now, can you give us some, for instance, what are the benefits, besides just the obligations and whatever, what are the benefits that can accrue by having this permit?
Clean water.
Besides clean water. Is there ability to, for instance, apply for certain grants and money?
Absolutely.
That might not be available to others because they don't have it, but it might to us?
Right. Like Michigan Culture Program has some great grant funding. We'll start that grant process, the new governor appointee to that community, so we'll be looking at what grants funds are out there. There are also some US EPA education dollars that are out there, and you have to be able to find them and go after them. But if you're not in compliance with a federal regulated permit, you won't be eligible for any of that.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Okay? None?
If you need anything, I brought some other material with me. This is the calendar of when you have to have this supplement, who's secretary?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes. Please keep in mind, are you looking at any other committees?
None at all.
Okay. Please keep in mind that you have a lot of options here, and people, other communities have been doing this for quite a long time. So when we have the NiSWAG meetings, we have things that you can look at and say, I don't have to read them, we are going to use what they're using, and that's certainly allowed. We have a group called the Indiana MS4 Partnership. In 2007, when I went to IEDM, I was the nursery stormwater coordinator, and Tom Easterly was the commissioner at the time, and we went down and he said to me, we have 182 permittees, and we have at least 70% that are not in compliance. I got to figure out why. So I went around the state and met with all of them and found out that there were three things. One, they didn't understand the permit. Two, they didn't know what best national practices were, and they weren't aware of what everybody else was doing. So that's where we started the annual meeting. And IEDM works with us, we have it once a year, bring all the MS4s together, and we educate them on every part of the permit, on everything that they need to do, and they walk away with tools that help them implement this when they get home. So there's a lot of guidance there for you and a lot of help so you're not left behind.
All right, well, thank you very much, Reggie, for stopping by to address this issue for us. So we will be discussing this then, you know, and we'll make a decision. I don't know that it's going to happen tonight, but you know, we may have to do it next month, and we'll get it...
Just need to mark on there that you need to make that decision by April 15.
Yes, okay.
Tax.
Yep, okay, thank you. Super, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So let us move on now to the regular order of business. The next is minutes of the January 10th meeting. Does everybody have a chance to review the minutes? Joan presented them to us the other day.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, are there any comments, corrections, additions? Nothing?
I had none.
Okay, all right. In that case, yes?
I, I, I do seven. The question?
Sure. About the minutes?
Yeah, on the last page.
Okay.
With the rate of all corporate comments where it says President Dumbrus, say that she reached out to three residents who had put their leave on the Michigan side?
Yes.
And it says two party removed leave, said you would contact left.
Yes.
In this case, two, two doesn't mean four, there's three. There's one she couldn't...
That's true. There was one I couldn't reach at all. Okay, so there was one I couldn't reach, and Joan did get me a phone number for another person for fourth. I thought, of course, there were only three phones, but there were four, okay, that actually did that. So in the meantime, we, I have had...
Three or four?
Yes, and then just as an aside...
Put a note in there that she could not reach one party.
Yeah.
So that may be four.
Okay. Thanks, though, for the comment, Reggie. Okay, if there are no other corrections or comments or additions, then I need a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
I'm gonna...
End with that small correction, I'm sorry.
I'm making a motion to accept the minutes with the updated, the updated number.
Okay, thank you. I need a second? Okay, Sam. Michael Martinez moved, and Sam Paxton seconded to accept the minutes. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to the reports from committees.
You have one more. You had a special meeting in January 24.
Oh. Okay. True. Thank you. Oh, see, we didn't have that to the other minutes, okay. To the agenda. Can you just send that out to us, too, Joan?
Yeah, I will send out to you. I sent them out this morning.
All right, so I did not see that one. All right, did the others, did you see? Pardon?
I didn't.
You didn't see anything? Sam, how about you? Michael?
No, I'm looking at my file. It's a character.
No. It's a January 24. No, I don't, because I did not see that. They're very short, so they can actually be read out loud. Joan, do you want to read it out loud?
If you go ahead, please.
Okay. President Dumbrus called the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance at 12:06 p.m. These are, I'm sorry, let me go back. January 24, 2023, noon, emergency council meeting minutes. Present were Dinah Dumbrus, Ralph Fox, Rich Young, and Joan Lewis. Absent were Michael Martinez and Samuel Paxton. Resolution 2023-01, a resolution adopting changes to the proposed list of streets of the town of Michigan Shores to be paid, to be listed on the CCG application for January 2023. If awarded the grant monies, the town will be responsible for only 25% of the costs. Several streets were changed since the PISA report was submitted in December 2022. After a brief discussion, Ralph Fox made a motion to approve the resolution 2023-01. A resolution adopting changes to the proposed list of streets of the town of Michigan Shores to be paid, which will be listed on the CCG application for January 2023. It was seconded by Rich Young. The motion carried with three ayes, two absent, Michael Martinez and Sam Paxton. Ralph Fox made a motion to adjourn. President Dumbrus adjourned the meeting. Any questions? No? Okay. Then I need a motion to approve.
All abstained.
Okay, all abstained?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we have just a minute, let's do this. Let me get this down here. Okay, so who made a motion to accept? Rich? Who? No? Okay. All right, who seconds?
Second.
Okay. All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
Tell me.
Four, four ayes, Michael abstained.
Who made the motion, seconded motion?
Uh, Sam Paxton. Oh, Rich, Rich made the motion, and Sam Paxton seconded.
I'll speak louder, I can't handle it here.
Okay. All right, I'll sign this for you in just a moment.
There should be two.
Yeah, I've got two and two, there's two and two over here. Okay. All right, thank you, Joan. And then when you get a chance, try to reset that, maybe, you know, actually, you're in the office.
I can, I can.
Okay.
Sure, I see it, well, but I don't know.
Okay. Okay, let's move on to a report from the committees officers and clerk treasurers, so that would be Joan.
First one we have, the fourth quarter payroll taxes. I'm just going to give you the total amount that was thrown off taxes that were paid from October, November, end of December of last year, comes to grand total of $2,858.52.
No meeting, so, no, I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any questions? Nobody had questions? No? Okay, so?
Aye. Aye.
Okay.
And we have five ayes.
All right, and this was, Rich Young moved?
Yeah.
Okay, and Ralph Fox seconded, right? Okay, all ayes.
Okay, and we got the next one, which is the January, boy, we're going to carry a while on this one. January 12th, payroll for Depp Chubb, grand total of $3,588.23. That includes outward taxes to account for.
Any questions?
No.
All right, I need a motion to approve. Rich? Okay, Rich Young? Need a second?
Second.
Well, I'll do Michael the same. Michael seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, five ayes. Joan, the vouchers have been approved.
And then I have the January payroll taxes, which covers Depp Chubb only. There's only one payroll figure for every month, and that amount is $491.71. And that amount is $491.71.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ralph Box has moved to approve. I need a second? Okay, Sam Paxton? Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, the ayes have it, and the vouchers have been approved.
And then we have the additional vouchers for January. I will quickly read those. 80 voice for $72.20. That was for the WATU 1099 forms. Indiana leader municipal clerks and treasurers, $82, that's for all of memos and meetings and whatever. And that, AT&amp;T mobility, $84.43. Chase card services. We got a credit of $9.36. And for promotional or gift card for the refuse driver, $100. For Microsoft, $5.67. For Adobe, $16.4. Then we have Briggs Outdoor Power Equipment for the snow plate for the dump truck, $5,299. Depp Chubb for testing our notifications, $7.80. Access of Port County for recordings, $500. Brad Damski, $625 for the reckless retainer. All emails with Depp Chubb, $35. Revised back collection letter, $35. And that was that. And to that one, then we go to Raven Associates for the building lawsuit, $210. Nipco, electric for the garage, $60.99. Gas for the garage, $216.70. Street lights, $19.33. For a grand total of $7,359.85.
Thanks. Joan, this is in the pile?
Yeah, it was attached with, some stuff I sent around.
Okay. All right, any questions of those vouchers? If there are no questions, I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve is read.
Michael Martinez moved to approve. I need a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ralph Box, second to approve those vouchers for payment. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, okay, the ayes have it, and those vouchers have been approved.
And you thought you were through, right? We're not, there's one more. The February vouchers. Town of Long Beach, $5,174 for the police protection. Michiana Shore Fire Department for the wrestling, $100. Office people, business purchases for office supplies, laser collar, $149.96. AIM for dues, $50. Republic Services for refuge pickup, $4,003.20. Department of Water Works, water for Kincaid, $9.36. Nelson Outdoor LLC for a message board, which we find that completed. AT&amp;T for a landline and internet, $98.30. Comcast internet, $121.84. Brenda Heckman, $101.25. Travel to post office in Vegas. So another one for the Department of Water Works for $9.36. Throw off the water in the garage. Michiana Shore Volunte fire department for fire protection, La Porte County Building Department, $800 for the building inspections for the fourth quarter. Brad Damski, $70.50. Emails and legal from, to myself concerning fines and the STR, $70.50. For emails from, to and from DINA in a resolution, $35. Legal for monthly retainer, $625. And research law, insured term rental, $217.50. And review of statutory laws, $70. And we have a couple more. $70 for phone calls with Ralph and Dinah. And another one for phone calls with, concerning the sewers, $35. For grand total of $17,066.10 for the first part of February.
All right, any questions from council members? Okay, if there are no questions, then I need a motion to approve these vouchers as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Ralph Box moves to approve. I need a second?
Second. Good, Sam.
Sam? Okay, seconded, all in favor indicate by saying.
Who's going to get that one?
Sam will get the second. Okay, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, the ayes have it, it's all five ayes.
Rich, are you collecting these on the other end? Thanks.
Okay. Okay, is that it, Joan, for the?
Yes, yeah.
For the vouchers, okay.
That's enough, Mr. Rich, that's enough, buddy, for one, one.
Just fine, okay, thank you, Joan. Here we go, let's pass that one. Okay, let us move on to the resolutions and ordinances. Um, first up, we have the extension of the STR moratorium. Ralph?
Okay, so we have made decent progress to the, uh, the video that's put together to review various possibilities with modifying our existing agreements. Uh, we presented those to the town plan commission at the last meeting, um, on the topic. It was a good discussion back and forth about how to go forward. So I have provided that latest list to Brad for his final feedback. At that point, once we know which ones are, um, best, we're going to move forward and start trying to write the ordinance changes themselves to see how the impact that we have. It, but reality is, is we're not going to be done by next month. It's, it's just not going to happen. So after some discussion, I've been bringing this up at the last few meetings, we're going to need to extend the moratorium. Otherwise, it ends at the beginning of next month, and, uh, we kind of lose the opportunity to make changes. So I have drafted a resolution to extend the moratorium. I provided it to Dinah. I'm not sure if Brad will see it yet. But my perspective is that we need to approve, I'll read it, but we need to approve this this evening. Basically, we're going to extend it out to August. I'm fairly confident that we can get through the process of drafting the documents, then having public review of them, and then passing them back to the town council for final approval at that time.
Okay, so you're thinking five months then, as opposed to six?
Uh, yes, I mean, we could, we could put any date in here that you want. I mean, we haven't, we haven't done anything yet. But if you think that it's, um, five months is cutting close, now's the time to change it, instead of going through this again in five months and pushing it out.
My personal thought would have been, well, we did six months, let's do six months again and just keep it the same way, but, okay, that's just me.
So would be the town council meeting, um, September?
I don't, I don't have time.
I got it.
Okay.
That would be the 12th of September? So I have some more technical rules when we read something one time, and we, uh, we vote to suspend the normal rules.
If you have the unanimous vote, you can vote to suspend the rules and adopt it all. That would basically, that would be a different.
No, is this both for resolutions and for ordinances?
Is this tailored as a resolution or?
It's a resolution. Your original document is a resolution.
Which you adopted on one reading? Yeah, it's you and Sam.
Okay, okay, all right. Okay, do you mind if I read through the whole, finish it? Okay, please, thank you.
Town of Michiana Shores, Resolution 2023. We don't have it up yet. A resolution to extend the existing moratorium on new applications to register short-term rentals through September 12, 2023. Whereas on September 13, 2022, the town of Michiana Shores adopted a resolution in terms of a temporary moratorium on the acceptance of applications of new short-term rentals in the town in order to evaluate ways to address concerns within the community with the current ordinance and resolution related to short-term rentals. And whereas on February 14, 2023, the town council extended the length of the moratorium, so it is not set to expire, um, until September 12, 2023. Whereas, since the moratorium has been in effect, the town has made substantial progress in reviewing the various issues related to short-term rentals and is in the process of developing new proposed regulations. Whereas the town wishes to allow sufficient time for the proposed regulations to be incorporated into the existing ordinance and resolution. Now, therefore, it is hereby ordained and enacted by the town council of the town of Michiana Shores in Port County, Indiana as follows. The moratorium then closed on September 15, 2022, is hereby extended through September 12, 2023. Read appeal provision, all prior ordinances of resolutions or parts thereof inconsistent. Many of the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Several relevant laws, if any section, laws, provision, or portion of this resolution is deemed to be invalid or unconstitutional by a court of competent jurisdiction, such provisions shall not affect any other section, clause, provision, or portion of this ordinance, passed and adopted by a town council of Michiana Shores, of the town of Michiana Shores, coming in the report, Indiana, this 14th day of February, 2023.
Okay. So if there are no other questions and comments from the town council members, then I will, you know, entertain a motion to?
Do you remember, do you?
Uh, whatever they want to give me.
Thanks. I don't know. I think it's two, I'm not 100% sure. If you'd have called me beforehand, I could have given it to you back.
Ralph, we're extending it to September?
Yes, sir.
And then the summer is coming up, and there'll be probably some new people buying that bit to want to get short-term rental. I don't know, I don't mind it, but.
Well, possibly, I, I, my guess is yes. We currently have 17 approved short-term rentals. Not all of them are active, there was a couple of them that were not active at this time. But I do anticipate some people coming to the town in over the next six, seven months. Looking for, grateful to start with. Um, I'm fine with it. And then we're going to, we're in it. Uh, we have a number of things on paper.
The. Anything that I still, that we're going to give some stand?
I think the market, the real estate market has kind of changed since a year ago, that they're starting to, you know, double within, it's going to put some limits on people jumping into the short-term rental at least for.
New time, for new one, sorry. New time, not new one? Yeah. It means somebody's been there, that's past 40 years. Correct.
Yeah, Rich, I mean, we put this in, what, October? Kind of a slow season, so we knew we were going to ruffle some feathers. But I think it's going to give us more time to get it right, rather than rush through something and have opportunities to pick it apart.
Like I said, I'm all in favor.
Yeah, no, I, I know what you're saying, I just, as long as we follow the process of doing it right with this, extending the moratorium, I mean, I think, uh, this is a good thing.
All right, thank you. Okay, so, um, I need a motion to approve the resolution on first reading?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the moratorium on the first reading.
Okay, I need a second?
Second.
All right, so Michael Martinez has moved to approve this resolution. Uh, Sam Paxton has seconded the motion. Now I need a, uh, vote to indicate approval of the, uh, of this motion. I will do a roll call vote. Rich Young?
Yes.
Sam Paxton?
Yes.
Ralph Box?
Yes.
Michael Martinez?
Yes.
Dinah Dumber's? Yes. All right, the motion has passed. Uh, the resolution to extend the STR moratorium, you think it is Resolution 2023-02, has been approved. Okay, thank you.
I will contact Joan next day or so and get, uh, the actual resolution number just to make sure.
Okay, excellent.
And we did change the date, so I need to update the document, and I'll put it to Joan for the formal.
Very good.
Don't you have to sign it tonight?
Uh, we can sign this, but it's got a lockup somewhere.
No, you've got a draft, I'm going to see, yeah.
Joan, will you, you send her the copy?
A clean copy?
I'll clean it up with the, like, the.
He's got a clean copy.
I don't like a copy, because she.
Yeah, I'll give you.
But I keep everything.
Yeah, I know you do.
Okay, all right. Well, then Ralph will get all the information to you, and then I will ask everybody to stop in at the office to sign.
And don't forget, it's not sitting here until next month.
Okay, so as soon as you can, stop in.
Post it.
Tomorrow afternoon, tomorrow later afternoon?
Friday.
Friday?
It's Wednesday.
Tomorrow, Wednesday?
That's right.
Tomorrow, Friday?
Congratulations.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you very much on that. Uh, let us move on to the, uh, ordinance that, I believe it was an ordinance that we were working on with regards to the coenforcement officer slash building commissioner. We had to put off the vote on this last month. Yeah, so we need to have a vote done today, tonight, for that.
I believe that has an ordinance number.
Yes, it does, that does have an ordinance number. It's probably in the minutes here. So I just need, we will need to have a motion to approve a second, and we will be able to vote, because the discussions had already taken place before. There's nine minutes. All right, council members, do we remember the number? Do, do you have a number in front of you?
It's a 2022 number, I recall that much. Nobody has a copy yet?
I sent a copy to you, but that was merely the draft that did not have a number on it, because I wasn't present in January's meeting for the meeting. So what number was assigned, I do not have.
I don't remember whether we assigned a number. Okay, let me look at this. 2022-07, oh, no, that's a, that's a, that's a noise. Okay, sorry. No, well, there's no number, you know, mentioned for it either last month.
Okay.
2022-01, first one of last year.
Okay.
I have no comment, I'm ready to go.
Yeah.
All right, well, then if we have no comment on it, then I will entertain a motion to approve.
Don't we have to read the title?
Um, do you have the title in front of you?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that's true of you, Joan.
Says Michigan Shores Position Description Class Title Code Enforcement Officer slash Building Commissioner.
Okay.
There's nothing else on it?
I mean, this is general purpose, provision received, job summary.
Okay, all right.
And that's for twenty twenty-two dash zero one.
That's right.
So now we can vote?
Yes. Okay, now that we have our number now, okay?
I'll make a motion to approve twenty-two, uh, two thousand twenty-two dash zero one, Michigan Shores Position Description Code Enforcement Officer slash Building Commissioner as read last month.
I'll second that.
Okay, well, Michael Martinez has moved, Ralph Box has seconded the ordinance, and Michael can read it over again?
No.
As we name it, since I don't have it in front of me.
Do you want to read it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, general purpose, the code enforcement specialist building commissioner performs a variety of routine.
Oh, we don't have to read the whole thing, just the title again for?
Oh, code enforcement officer slash building.
Okay, that's all. All right, great, thank you very much. Okay, so, uh, I, all in favor indicate by saying aye, we will do a roll call vote.
Aye.
Wait, roll call vote. Ralph Box?
Aye.
Sam Paxton?
Aye.
Uh, Rich Young? Michael Martinez?
Aye.
Diana Dumberus, aye.
Thank you for reading that too.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question on that, I won't move it now to ask yet, but I noticed there's an item in there that mentions, uh, code enforcement working with the legal as far as enforcing it for the fines. Why do I have to be in between?
Doesn't specifically say clerk in there?
It does.
You mean with the?
Not in there, but there's an ordinance that says the clerk.
Because no.
Really, an ordinance that says the clerk is.
The law doesn't call it money.
Yeah, we.
For starters.
The code enforcement officer.
The money. So you have to be a law.
Well, sure, I get it when it's open with.
Yes.
Just like you're doing with code boundaries. I get it when it's open with.
Yes, so this is the same.
Why don't we work these the same way and cut out the middle man?
Me? Joan, I'm not sure what it is that you're doing right now as the middle man, as you say.
I'll have to send that ordinance to you, so you can understand it.
Okay, well, this one, but this ordinance has already been passed now, so let's look at this.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, so let us take a look at that then, okay? How, what the difference would be?
Read that, you can see, it says something about working with the legal. And I thought, well, why put me in the middle?
Okay, all right, Joan. Okay, let us move on. There were two items that came to my attention, um, in the last few weeks, and the first one had to deal with accessory structures, specifically with hot tubs. The question came up, um, and actually it was brought to me by our, uh, building commissioner, uh, Deb Chubb, who said that, uh, there had been hot tubs being installed with no word to her or anyone else. And, uh, don't we have anything to cover this, or shouldn't we have something that would cover this? Now, if you take a look at various definitions of hot tubs and spas and so forth, you know, they're, you know, they're included sometimes as a small pool and a lot of different kind of explanations on it. The issue that we have is to make sure that everything is done safely here in town. Now, our ordinance, the accessory structures, does not address specifically the words hot tub, I believe. So we don't mention that word, but it could be included under, you know, into that, it can be, I guess, incorporated into that, uh, ordinance that we have, because this should also require, um, inspections for safety's sake. Hot tubs, uh, obviously are connected to some kind of power, whether it's electric, it's got gas. Plumbing was needed in order to install the hot tubs. So all of these are necessary inspections that we require when people do other kind of things and other substantial work at home, you know, replacing, you know, plumbing and piping and all this kind of stuff. So, um, I think it behooves us to actually have that incorporated into an accessory structures ordinance. Now, I meant to work on this from yesterday to today, and I did not do that, so I will work on incorporating it into our accessory structure and do the necessary research that has to go along with the pools and hot tubs and spas and so forth, and then present it, you know, for your review next time around. So, or even during the month, perhaps, I'll be able to send it through and then so that we can work on it and get it in place, because there are several that are already, we know, uh, who already are talking about putting them in, so we wanna make sure that people understand what's taking place, you know, and that this is necessary. I mean, it is a safety issue anyway.
Well, at minimum, uh, without even changing the ordinance, we need to be clear, and I think I talked to Deb about this, that if you're gonna put a hot tub in, you need a permit. And, uh, you have to pay the normal amount for the permit, but any hot tub I can imagine is gonna have electricals of it, so they're gonna be an electrical inspection. And that's, that's the basics.
Yes.
Right now, people don't know that they need a permit, and we just never talked about it before, so I think, uh, from Deb's perspective, I completely agree that she needs to tell these people they have to have a permit.
Yes.
It doesn't have to be specifically spelled out. We don't have a lot of rules about decks in our ordinances, but you're required to get a permit to go to deck.
Yes, okay, all right, that makes sense to me. Any comments from you, Mr. Nasty, on that?
No.
No?
I think what Ralph is saying is probably correct, it's probably already implied that it's covered under accessory structures, but maybe it's specifically mentioned.
Okay.
Clarify that.
All right, well, that's good. Well, then, you know, in order to announce to people, we can always put out a little blurb on the website and with regards to emails, and, you know, that can also add it to the, to the permit form, yes, yeah.
So, um, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be better if it were explicitly on the accessory structures system of the code? I think people will, and they don't see it, and so they don't think it's required, because they think we do look at the code. But the other part of it is, um, it would be great to have some, uh, some regulation on how they're managed. Um, I'm, you know, concerned about draining them, you know, we don't have, um, you know, that's just, you can look from, you know, it's the water they're pouring in, or for some, for now, we use salt, and that's just really deadly to, you know, any plants that it hits. Uh, and so, you know, so I think, and it's not that simple. Uh, so, um, you know, I just kinda looked into it, it's something I've never had, but I did some research and, you know, it really is, you know, there's a lot of varying opinions about what to do with the water. So I think it'd be really smart to, to set out how it should be managed.
Okay. Thank you, Deb, that is a very good idea. I remember when I was discussing, um, in the case of a pool that wanted to be installed, that we discussed the, um, what happens at the time it gets drained. Actually, I had reached out to IEDM about this and to the drainage board, and they told me at the time, they said, um, that as long as the rest of that with the pool, let the pool stand dormant for a number of days later on in order to allow chemicals to, um, dissipate and or evaporate, then if the pool can be drained out whichever way. So now I know that the pools in our area would be going towards a ditch, you know, so, and then some obviously may end up in the lake in one way or another, no matter what, but, you know, no matter what, it ends up in the lake.
So you understand that if you use salt instead of chlorine?
Yeah.
That doesn't go well.
Yeah.
And then you can't really get that.
That could only evaporate, yeah, all right. So, but it won't dissipate, yeah, okay. Uh, so we need to, that is a very good idea to work on, something like that, so we'll work on something like this to get it all together for next month, but in the meantime, you know, please add it to any kind of permit if anybody talks to you, and we can post it on the website and in an email to let people know, so. Okay, thank you. Okay, so the next section is as follows. It's code violations regarding parked vehicles. John Cottas up to us says, uh, you know, something that we should perhaps take a look at, because we really have not paid any attention to it. And, um, there are a number of vehicles that are found in town, and I know if you took a look at the ordinance, I believe, uh, both, uh, my council members, right, Sam had sent something about it and, and it addresses, so this is something that we can take a look at and make sure that we are interpreting it the correct way. Sam, I don't know if you wanna add anything to what you have written there?
Well, I just, I just wanna make sure that we're, the definition of what I'm on with your ordinance is clear. Joan suggested that I look at the dictionary, but I think, as an attorney, you'd probably recommend that we have something defined in the document.
That's for enforcement, yes, you don't wanna leave it too empty, so.
I mean, if they're, I'm all in favor of not storing anything, you know, that's permanent or not, uh, you know, in a garage or some sort, if you're gonna leave it there to park over the winter or what have you, but I wanna make sure that before we start plowing forward.
Well, we've got something, I think, within our, I don't remember where it was, I'm looking at this one, uh, but I believe it's a, believe that there's something about you can store certain things as long as they are at the side and towards the back of the house. But not, but not up in the front. So I think what we need to do is determine, you know, which of those things are allowed or not allowed. I know that there's a family that, um, spends part of their year in Arizona, they're here probably for most of the year, and then they come back and they do drive, but I don't even remember if it's an actual motor vehicle or whether it's a towable trailer.
It's a mo- mobile home.
Oh, it is a mobile home.
A motor home, like.
Okay, a motor.
RV or whatever you want.
Right, okay, all right, so I know that they, theirs is part, uh, part of their land, they've got a substantial lot, and they have theirs, and it's close to the street. Then there's another, uh, family that has one as well, and that one's motorized too, but that is way back on their property. That's, um, off of Oakdale and Grover. Uh, they've got one there. And then I know there's another gentleman who's got a smaller RV, there's several, there's several smaller trailers and stuff like this that are parked in various places in town. So those are, those are just the trailers, so we need to figure out, um, as we walk around or drive around, where these things are located and how, what are we going to do? Because if we enforce it, for one, we have to enforce it for everybody who has that particular vehicle or trailer, we can't pick and choose. So, so we'll have to make some kind of a determination on that. And so I know this was just given to, you know, brought up again, you know, at this time, but I would like us to look into this. Okay, so if there is a volunteer who wants to desperately look into it, please let me know and to work on that, but, but we should take a look at this. I'll work on the, as I said, I will work on accessory structures, and if there's someone here who would like to really read this through and see how we might be able to adjust it and see about definitions and so forth, you know, let me know, we can all look around at those vehicles. But if someone wants to work on it, please let me know, otherwise we'll, I'll have to try to figure out what we do on that. So that is a concern that was brought up with regards to, to those. You'd like to look at that? Okay. That sort of does fall in under some of the other thoughts that you had on the enforcement and stuff, right?
And Sam, I know you had, the second question you had was watercraft, does that look at boats? I mean, I look up Google and it literally says a boat or vessel that travels on water. I mean, to your point, do we need to be more specific on that? I mean, watercraft?
Well, I think watercraft includes more than just those, if you're gonna talk about ski, jet skis.
What about kayaks? We talked about motorized watercraft. I mean, there's a lot of definitions here.
You're right, yeah.
We use the term storage. Storage, I mean, it needs to be defined.
Yeah, definitely storage.
You gotta have a vehicle that can hold a one-ton or lower carry capacity, um, in a front garage area unless it's for delivery. What about construction equipment that's in front of the house for three, four, six months because they're building a house?
Well.
This is, well, I'm just.
But, yeah, 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 you're right, you're right.
There's a lot of definition issues with the way this was written.
I mean, the big thing that stands out to me is, um, you know, section, in the sections, I and D were, allows parking or storage longer than thirty days, it's a side of here or in the garage. So, I mean, we, we have to figure out, what is it? Watercraft and offload vehicles only, so what, what defines an offload vehicle? Is that a Jeep? Uh, you know, there's.
I drive an offload. Well, um, that, so we need to take a look at this, and we have to make a decision on how we're going to, um, to enforce this particular rule, because if we need to make changes of some kind, then let's take care of that, but then if we do decide that, I mean, we should be enforcing all of our ordinances. It shouldn't be just like we pick and choose, we like number one, nine, and twelve, you know, the rest of them can fall by the wayside, so, um, so that if we're going to do this, let's do it the right way. So if you could take a look at it and, and, you know, you know, and get some thoughts together and then share those with us.
Together.
Okay? That sounds great.
Yeah, I'll look it over too whenever you feed it up on that, because that's.
All right, sounds really good, thank you very much. Okay, so let us move on then, um, we have our next one, because I think we're done with this particular section. So now this is appointments to boards and commissions, liaison positions and so forth, and I don't believe that we can figure everything that we should have looked at. Now, uh, the first one is the road commissioner, uh, who is Bob Skolkowski, and Bob has indicated, is he on the call by, is he on the?
He's still left.
Did we do him already? Okay, then he's good.
The call point.
Okay, because Ray has agreed to. So, uh, my questions came up with the, uh, park board BZA and the advisory plan commission. So with regards to, since park board is here, I'm gonna go there first. So I reached out to the two, the two, um, uh, one member whose term actually finished at, in December of twenty twenty-two, to see who, if she would like to remain or not, and this was Brenda Heckman, and Brenda indicated that she would withdraw from this position now and remain, you know, working with the booster club. So we thank you for the work that you did on our, you know, board and, um, and in her place, and it now, so for the park board, that means we would have, basically, um, we need to fill two positions. One, which would have been Brenda's, and then the other position is to take over for Sonia Lancioni, who left last March. Um, so I have one position, uh, for the park board and a recommendation for someone to do this, and we have, um, well, anyway, we have two positions, and I have two, hopefully, okay, candidates that are ready to take on this particular, uh, responsibility. So those two, uh, two candidates are Kevin Chun and Jean Paxton, to replace these two park board members that will no longer, are no longer there. So this will give us a full complement, because Dolly Milik has decided to, she is still, and has two years, and she says she doesn't wanna stay, so we have Dolly Milik for another two years, and then we have Skip Mako, I just didn't bring that particular sheet with me right now, so I don't remember how long his term is, but it's still in existence, so he's still got some time going forward. And then we have Sonia's position, which would go forward, I believe that one would end, I think it ends, I'm not even sure if it's at the end of this year or twenty-five, actually. And then this new one would end also in twenty, at the end of, what is it, twenty-six? So it's twenty-five, twenty-six, at the end of twenty-six. And I think the other one was twenty-six as well, so. Anyway, so we, oh, no, that would be twenty-seven, hers is, oh, twenty-five, twenty-five. I'm trying to think of the, the names, I don't have the dates, never mind, but we do have two positions that need to be filled, and we have two candidates over here, we have Kevin Chun and we have Jean Paxton. So if my board agrees, now that I mixed everything up into a great big pot.
Yes, no.
I think you better wait till you have terms that they're going to sort.
Uh, we can, we can assign the terms, we already, we'd like to assign people so they can get started working for next, for the next time around. I, I can actually look up the terms in, on my, uh, phone if I need to, you know, right now. But let us, you know, I believe that we can make these appointments, even though the date is not right there, but we have two appointments for this. Um, so I'd like, you know, if everybody agrees, then I would like to appoint these two people.
Make a motion to appoint them?
Let's move, let's make it official, okay?
Uh, let me ask a question.
Sure.
Is, does the town council, or is the president appointed?
Well, if it's the president, it makes it even easier. I don't recall at this point right now.
I have a president appointed.
Maybe, maybe I do. Well, anyway, I'm at least bringing this forward, and I want to appoint these people, okay?
Well, I'll just use myself as an example, you appointed, is it Ray?
No, for which party?
Council?
No.
The Democratic Party.
The Democratic Party, yeah, appointed you, not me. No, no, there are, I, the only kind of things that the town executive can do is appointments to some of the boards and commissions, and not everything, so, you know, but in that case, then I would appoint these two individuals to our park board. Okay, so, um, moving on to the BZA. Okay, so moving on to the BZA. I still need to get in touch with one individual, two peoples, basically, terms ended. The first one was Mario Jobe's, and the next one was Linda Stewicki's. So Mario Jobe has already responded, and he says he would like to stay on for another four years, and he says, and then start looking for somebody else. But he's willing to stay on for another four years. And then Linda Stewicki, I just have not heard back from her. She, I'm not sure if she's, you know, she must be busy with work, perhaps traveling or something, so. But Linda has been working here, you know, I think diligently for the BZA, and I do hope she stays on. The other members are all fine. The advisory plan commission is filled, so we have absolutely nothing to do for the advisory plan commission to make any kind of appointments there. So welcome to the chief. Okay, all right. So let us move on now to departmental reports. Okay, so police chief.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
If you said something by the road commissioner.
Yeah.
And then you said Ray.
Oh, you know what, Rich, no, I meant to say, you know, when I started talking, I thought that we had not appointed him, but Ralph corrected me, and he says we actually appointed Bob Salkowski last month. And then Ray is willing to stay on as the blood plant administrator. I twisted his arm and said he can't quit. So he's still the blood plant administrator.
So am I still the road commissioner?
I should hope so. Well, these are the liaisons now, so, that's right, I'm glad you reminded. So now, the liaisons. You were the road commissioner liaison, and basically sort of an overseer of trees as well for us, right? I don't know what else to call it, but every time there's a problem, we would call you with trees, right? So that is rich. Okay, so now, in the past, we have had, Michael has been the liaison with the police and the fire, correct?
Yeah.
Or you're doing both, correct?
Sure.
All right. So now, I have been acting as the liaison with the park board. And we have a liaison with the building commissioner, you know, enforcement officer, and that would be Sam. And I think, Ralph, you are our liaison with the plant commission, right?
Yes.
So you're overseeing what the plant commission is working on. We just don't really have anybody for BZA, but I don't know that we can have someone because they're sort of a semi prejudicial group, so we.
They need to be separate from us.
Yeah, that should be completely separate from us, so we don't have to worry about that. Okay, so thank you very much, and let's go back to police chiefs, please.
Good evening, everyone. For the month of January, Long Beach Police Department responded to 212 calls for service.
And just a minute, chief, okay. Ladies, because, okay, excuse me, because of the recording, we need to keep it quiet, otherwise it's not clear. Go ahead, chief, please.
We responded to 212 calls for service when compared to 140 calls for service in the previous year for an increase of 72 calls for service. During the month of January, 12 incident reports were documented. A total of five individuals were arrested, two felony arrests, and one was referenced a vehicle pursuit. Second one was a felony drug possession warrant that was issued for an incident here in the town of Michigan shores. Three misdemeanor arrests related to traffic offenses, and we also investigated two very unfortunate death investigations that were deemed natural causes. Overall, it's a steady month for us, directly related to the town of Michigan shores. Back in January 3rd, Deputy Marshal Matthew Farley responded to Pacha Train Drive, reference of family domestic. During the course of his investigation, he found fentanyl that was laying out in Plainview inside the home. He had documented the call for service, recovered the narcotics that was in the home, filed for a warrant. And subsequently, we arrested the 42-year-old son who was living at the home with his father and his uncle, and he was charged with felony drug possession. On January 3rd, Deputy Marshal Matthew Farley also responded to 400 block of Heinrich Drive, reference of family domestic, there was an ongoing issue there, and we documented the matter. There was no battery that occurred that was documented for future reference. January 19th, Sergeant James Schooling and myself responded to the 200 block of Dream Wall in reference to a welfare check on a 67-year-old female. We found her semi-responsive on the floor inside the home, had forced entry into the home, summoned the assistance of medical personnel, and she was checked out and refused medical treatment at that time. January 19th, also Sergeant James Schooling responded again to the 400 block of Pacha Train, which would have been the second time in that month that we were there for a family domestic. Again, the matter was documented, no assault occurred at that time. And then on January 26th, Deputy Marshal Matthew Farley responded to the 200 block of Dream Wall. We were there about seven days earlier, and the 67-year-old female this time was found to be deceased on the upstairs bedroom of the home. And that is all that I have to report. I would like to add, I see under communications that you'll be discussing tonight your opioid settlement funds. As a suggestion to you, I know there are restricted funds and unrestricted funds. One of the things we're doing in town of Long Beach is we're going to use some of the funds to purchase an automated electronic defibrillator, an AED, to place it inside our town hall in a box and put the marks after the AED. I was talking to Eric Bendix, probably coming up this evening, and suggested that may be something you want to consider, as well as you could also purchase them, fill the fire department for some of their vehicles and that, because that is one of the things it's covered with. As you've seen from the state and Indiana Attorney General's office, it's quite easily what you can and cannot use those funds for.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on. Fire chief, Eric Bendix.
For the month of January of 2023, spent 275, 26 hours. A lot of those hours were spent by folks on to strategy and tactics, structure fighting, class, and was very well attended, and we worked a lot. There was, I think, five of us in that. During the month, we had nine calls, two of them already talked about the same place. The other one was on Polk Haven of 117, and then the other one was on January 1st, it was a long call on Brooklyn. Other than that, I did find out today that we still retained our ISO rating of four. We just heard back from them after all the hours last year, thinking April may be put in on everything they had to fill out. So we still retained our four rating for the town.
Great, awesome.
And that's all I have. Thank you, chief.
All right, well, thank you very much, chief, okay? All right, let's move on to the building commissioner for enforcement officers' report, or enforcement, building commissioner.
So I got, you know, the report, and then gave hard copies as well, you know, five permits during the month, issued, you know, various smaller items. Still have members of several quarters that are working at, like the long cases, you know, on the, during the discovery phase. 2621, Hunter Train, still was ready to move that forward anywhere. And then as to collections on STR, that's in violation, I did send all of that information off to Mr. Attorney Dasky here, so just, you know, moving on the backside. Let's see, oh, yeah, BZA met. One STR special use petition was approved for 12 hour quarter, so she's, you know, pending, waiting for approval from this body. Oh, and then they, BZA did then update their application to show the $250 meal price for their fees. I issued a certificate of occupancy, kind of an app that I'm making, at 321, a work site. We had been working with town council members on changing the short-term rental ordinance. And then I did attach an updated permitted STR list, and then I decided to add the short-term rental that are operated with our permit onto that list as well, just so you know. This is something we talked about in the report mix about, you know, people who decide to assert that they are full-time residents and therefore not required to get the special use grant, but they're also not covered at all in the permitting requirement by this body. So I would like to see that changed, right? And then something I didn't make it out of court, just because it just happens at noon, but I did go over and check out my friend's letter from Long Town Sunset, that really is a very large, beautiful stone, the chain wall along this big long driveway. But in, for certain that, I directed this fracture of tars and a such, so that he can work in the winter on the cement. But I went in there today, and it was, I mean, it was rocky, so I told him, get it down. So that's going down. So that was just here. So that's our report.
Okay, any questions for them? Nothing? Okay, thank you very much. All right. Glad to check their place out, you know? When I drove by, I was like, wow, it looked like an army encampment, you know, with all the tars. So, okay. Let us move, oh, there's no park. Road commissioner did not send me anything. Is Bob on our call? Now, this, he is not present, okay. All right, so I don't have anything, because I did not get anything in advance. Plant commission, Ralph Box.
Okay, a couple things to talk about real quick. We didn't have any people come forward to ask for permits. As I mentioned earlier, we've done the discussion in short company and for this changes with the entire commission now, so. The other thing is, we're reaching, finally, we're reaching conclusion with the changes to the comprehensive plan for those changes. We hope to have the public meeting at the beginning of the next meeting in March for public comment, and then the, unless something goes awry, we will go to approve the document and then send it up to the town council for final approval. So a little bit, little bit more work to do there, but most of it is.
Thank you. Okay, that's it then for plant commissioners for right now? Okay, great, thank you. That's a lot of work already. Thank you very much. Matt Bowen is not here, so there's nothing new from the BZA, I understand. The next meeting is supposed to be in March. Deb is correct, for the BZA?
April, actually.
Oh, April, okay. So the next meeting is in April. Oh, I see, April 2023, okay, very good, thank you. White Ditch Drainage Board, Michigan shores has not appeared at the white ditch, which is always a relief. So I was at the meeting this morning, everything is fine with regards to us. If you do notice something, like trees in the ditch and so forth, make sure, somebody notices, somebody tells someone on the council, call me. You know, we're called even Rich, so he knows, but I then would report it to either, we split it up, either it goes to, to devotes to us to take care of, or else it has to be sent to the drainage board, and then they will take care of whatever problems. Everything east of El Porro goes to drainage board. Okay, let's take a look now, website, there's no other, you know, report from Samantha. And a NERC C meeting was very, oh, it was a great meeting that I went to that was, I believe in January. A lot of valuable information with regards to information that was, you know, disseminated there about, we talked about, actually, the MSWors, we talked about the grant writing program that's going to be at Indiana Northwest. You know, I believe we talked about various grants and things that may be available for small communities such as ourselves, especially to work with, you know, you know, things that can be hazards to us, for instance, you know, trees, water, different kind of things like that. So there was a lot of valuable information, and as a matter of fact, we're getting a, there is going to be, it's sort of like a survey kind of thing for us to complete as a town. And I believe I sent that out to you guys yesterday. I don't remember if you got one or not from me. I think it was, if not, then I'll send it out, because I did get the information, and there'll be something for us to work on. So it was very good, it was a good meeting, you know, at NERC C last month. Anyway, let's move on to unfinished business. A report on the CCMD application, everything was completed on time and submitted, so now we wait to see what's taking place with regards to that. Now, second to the B, addition of the name of the town to the notice board. Any news on that, on what we might do?
Well, after the last meeting was kind of open, so I went and contacted various people around the community to see where signs have typically been made. I got the name of the people that did the sign out here by the fire department. They own one business, somebody else owns that business, and so I asked them, gave them some basic information, and got a quote from them. And I tracked down the company that did the shoulder hill signs that you see. These are nice signs. They're made out, they're not made out of wood, they'll last a very long time. There's some typically resin-based. So anyway, I've got some samples that these folks made up for me. And, you know, we're not making any decisions. I just wanted to show you what I was able to dig out. So the first one is retro graphics. They're the glue that took over, the company did the sign up by the park department here. And I tried not to leave them in any direction. I said, look, this is one guy, he has some dimensions. Originally, I said, we might put it on the top of the sign or the bottom, just to point out everybody. The two people I talked to said, you don't want to put it on the top, it won't be stable. So they just, and I gave them no direction on what the thing should have on it. I gave them a logo and the name of the town. So this would require certainly more development of the idea. So theirs was laminated metal, the first one, and you know what you give at that. Simcoe signs, both of those would be part of your thing. The Simcoe small sign would have a metal border around it. They're more expensive, but they're not pure metal, and they probably last a lot much longer. They're going to have a 3D look to them as opposed to a metal sign, it's just going to be flat. So this is just an idea, not looking for approval or anything like that at this point.
So when do you want to make a decision on something like this?
Well, it depends on, I mean, I think it would be great to have the sign up in the spring, when people start to come back out here and they can see the sign, the message boards moving up.
Yeah.
We'd have a nice sign on at some point. I think that's very appropriate.
Okay.
I don't think we should delay, it's not going to be that kind of.
I'm sorry if I missed it. Do you see what the turn on time is if we were to pick one of these?
Two weeks to up to.
That's not bad.
It just kind of depends.
Okay.
How busy they get at that one.
Are each of these mounted?
Well, they are mounted.
Okay. The signs, like, they come with pretty little holes.
Don't matter, I'll be a detail by assumption. I looked at the long short wheels, and, you know, it's a sign by itself, and it's on two posts, and it's bolted in, so it's first.
I have a question. Would we put it only on the one sign that's by stop 37, or put it on each of the signs? Or maybe, I don't know if the one up front needs it here, because we have everything else that talks about Michigan shores, but like the one by the tarp?
Well, I think it's certainly something to concern to put a typical sign on the wide over by King Kip Park once we decide what to do. Another thing that we need to discuss is the original message boards. The intent is that they would be paid for with hard terms. And the question is whether this additional signage would be covered as well. I haven't, I have no idea how to figure that out. My assumption is it would, but.
Well, it identifies the town, so, you know, perhaps it would, since it would be, you know, like informing that this is the town's message board.
Joe, any of you?
Not any more than you.
Okay, well, we can find that out.
I don't know at this point.
Yeah, okay, we can find out, okay?
I do, you need to write a resolution on a warrant or something to say you want taken off the funds.
So it, I mean, I could go and get more details from any of these guys, but.
Well, I mean, these two, the second option, to me, looks like you're already.
Based on this, I see one that I like, but I don't know how you want to go about getting a vote or.
Well, I mean, tell me what you think, because I thought it narrowed, if I'm going to keep chasing this, I want to narrow it down. I don't want to.
Me personally, I like option A in the middle.
Yeah, I like option A as well. I believe that getting a sign that's going to last longer is well worth it, instead of something that may, you know, work for, you know, less than full off, so.
Same here, but what option B, or person, I think that's an option B is too big.
Yeah.
Rich would.
I agree. Same, I don't like the option B, it is too big.
Yeah, okay. Way too big.
Well, I can do this, I can throw the conversation with both of the companies about the smaller sign. And again, we're not going to decide the graphic just yet, that'll become the last thing that we want to start. You know, they threw something different together, but I'll give more details.
Yeah. And use one question too, is there one that lasts longer than the other, with other elements?
Yeah, and I don't know.
No, that's what I'm saying, that's a question.
No, that's going to settle that, so. But a metal sign, I'm cautious about, because if it's steel, you know, in many years, it's going to show its age. Probably everything lasts longer. But we all talk to the folks about it.
Nice work.
Great, thank you. So now, reports, well, we've already really discussed the STR return, because we passed it, so this is a moot point here at this point. Okay, so let us move on to new business, and that includes the refuse contract. So Michael, you want to tell us about what you've done?
Yes, so we run through it all, so we have it on record. I've contacted four refusers.
I've contacted four refuse services slash companies in the last week. They are as followed for Public Services, LaCorte County Solid Waste, Waste Management, and Michiana Recycling. In talking with LaCorte County Solid Waste, the lane is misleading, as they only do recycling, so we scratched them out. So I got in contact with Republic Services, who I sent over the contact email to Joan, so that one is hopefully off and running. In terms of waste management, I was told that somebody was going to call me back within forty-eight hours via my cell phone. This was as of Wednesday of last week, I've yet to hear anything from them. I'll follow up tomorrow morning to, just to follow up. And then also Michiana Recycling as well, was supposed to contact me via email, I just checked my email right now, and I have nothing, and that was within a forty-eight hour period as well. So as of right now, the only active bid that we would possibly send out is the Republic Services for now, with again, the understanding that tomorrow I'll follow up with Michiana and Waste Management. But they both were interested when I talked.
Okay, and the Michiana one, that's not the same one that was with us before? Oh, it is, oh, okay.
But like I told Joan, is, I mean, I, there wasn't a lot of companies out there, so I wanted to at least saturate with what I could. You know, again, I'll call one more time if I don't hear anything, let it be, but.
All right. Now, we probably have some kind of a date, but I wish we should send these out and get received.
I have to have the specs, because I turned those specs over, did a little to find out how we went and sent them.
I did send that via, like, the bid two, is that what you're asking for, the specs? I put it in within.
Specs, the one that's got, I don't know how many sheets on it, just got quite a few, and it also had some, it was what we used the last time, but we had those extra bids on the end.
Yeah. Within, if within that email that Joan did put bid two, which just basically means dump it, leave it without walking, so I think I did call it out, you know, I'll stop by tomorrow.
Well, that means I've got to take it apart, right? You didn't, you didn't send it to me with the.
Just with that specific bid?
Yeah.
No, because it was in PDF.
Can I ask a question? Was that Michiana Recycling?
Yes.
Is that the one on the?
Yep.
In Michigan.
Yeah, I know it's, it's.
I said it would never come back out.
Well, I think you're talking about Lake Shore, that the guy came in here last, oh, it's Lake Shore? That was Lake Shore. Michiana is over by my house.
Oh.
And they have their own disposal facility over there.
Oh, okay.
That was Lake Shore disposal.
Okay, yeah. Okay.
Well, thank you, because I thought it was.
All right. We have one more to reach out to, maybe, maybe, maybe the president is no longer working for it.
So that's where we're at. Joan, so just to be clear, do you want me to come in tomorrow, or how about that, or do you want me, how do you want me to proceed with that, because I don't want to.
Well, if you just want the.
Bid number two.
Last part taken off from it, I can do that.
Okay.
You know how to get a PDF to be a word document, don't you?
I mean, yeah, I guess, but that was a scanned document. That was a scanned.
Yeah, you can do a scanned.
Yeah, that's what the issue was though, it was a scanned PF.
Okay.
So I can't manipulate it.
You can't do that.
I'll tell you, I had it coming in with you before you yelled at me about not signing these documents, so we'll try to figure it out tomorrow. Fair enough.
Okay, excellent, okay.
Yeah, so that's it. So I did give them a hard date of March third, a Friday, by end of business.
They're getting it.
Yes, for all the documents to be sealed and sent back to us so that we can review.
Open them, we have to open them during the next meeting, which will be March fourteenth.
Yep, and that's what it's.
Because I have checks to do tomorrow, too.
Okay, so we'll take care of it tomorrow, but that's where we're at.
Okay, great, okay, thank you. All right, on that. Now, when we were setting priority goals for 2023, that was the first, you know, meeting, one of the things that had slipped my mind, and I didn't mean for to do that, was that sewer line question. So I have again sent it back to see if Doug had any information for us, I don't know if he said, you may give us a report when it's time for some of that, unless you can answer anything on that now. Did he say anything?
I can do it in a good place. Michigan City basically clarified where their position was as far as, you know, whether property owners had an X would be a part of Michigan City to attach to this word. So they clarified that in the summary, where it's not required for authorization, which I think opens the door for more. Now, I know that because Attorney Anthony O'Beirich helped me, he was representing one of the property owners, he's been at previous meetings. Doug was more involved in that process, which I think Doug's been expected to quarantine for the last seven days.
Oh.
So no need for him, but I would expect there'll be probably a pretty substantial update for your next meeting.
Okay, excellent, okay, thank you very much, good. Okay, so that answers that question here for us. Now, I hear I just, it's really not new business, but I do, maybe fit under miscellaneous, but I'm going to ask it now. Joan, do we have a signed ordinance of the noise da, sign document for the noise ordinance that we could pass along to Chief Swistick? We approved it at the meeting last month.
Yeah, I think it's.
Okay, so hopefully we have everybody's signatures on it, we need a copy of it to pass along to Chief Swistick because.
Is that what you're calling resiliency assessment? Is that what you're calling?
No, 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 that was something else. That was resiliency assessment is.
You talked about something that's not around here.
Yeah, well, that's the resilient, that's something else. That is an assessment that I was mentioning before with regards to one of the programs that we may be able to shed under to get, you know, additional monies and help with stuff.
Chief Swistick, wait, say.
The noise ordinance, the new noise ordinance, so he can share it with his officers as well.
Okay.
Okay, so we need to get that over to him. That can come via email as well, that's good.
Please.
Okay, thank you very much, okay.
Thank you, Chris.
All right, great. So attorney report.
Spacey will cover it.
Okay, all right, great, done. Any, I don't have anything else to add to miscellaneous business, does anybody else have more? No?
Um, yes, sir. I've already been in contact with Signature Loans, as you.
Oh, excellent, that's right.
I'm trying to get some dates, two weeks for spring cleaning, so just waiting, I believe he was on vacation for the last ten days, so hopefully we'll get some dates so we can send that out in the spring newsletter, but we're looking.
All right.
We're in contract to two weeks of cleanup.
Okay, excellent, okay, very good. Okay, now we still have the communications received, the opioid settlement, letters that were sent out, Joan drew my attention to that as well, and I just wanted to let everybody know that there will be some monies available to the town, I am not sure how much. Joan, were you able to decipher how much was ours?
Well, it was like the last time, it was just only a couple hundred dollars.
Yeah, so it's not much, but we may be able to do something with it.
Part, they said part of it, they had two different parts, we only got one part, but the other part went to the county.
To the county, yes, I remember that, so, okay.
And that's probably what's going to happen with this.
Okay, so we'll have to take a look at this, and we can always check, you know, on what we should be, you know, doing with that. I don't remember the detail, the date that it has to be done with, I thought we still had, you know, some weeks to do it, but.
It's not coming home.
No, I know it's not long, but I don't, you know.
Don't you want to take a vote on it tonight?
Well, we can.
And you're not?
Oh, yeah. Do you have the document out? Did you guys all get copies as town council members? Because mine came from, you know, as a council member?
Deb, thank you, Joyce.
Okay, all right. That's what I said?
Yeah. Some of you must have it.
In my email, but no, I didn't print it.
Were you looking for?
The copy of that opioid.
Opioid settlement.
Settlement.
Joan had sent an email about it.
They've got it on there.
Talking about this?
That's it.
This is just a letter? This, a little letter?
Yes, yes, yes. I don't think that there was anything else. Is there any kind of a date by which?
It was sent on December seventh of twenty-twenty.
Okay, but when do we respond?
Yeah, for some reason, nine of them. Is there a date on it?
Here, okay, it says, return of the deadline is April eighteen, twenty-twenty-three, so I think what we need to do is just read through it again, and we can make a vote on April. I mean, in our March meeting, okay?
Wait till April.
Well, no, there's no point in doing, but we will pass that back to Rich, but so, but since we have time. No, 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 we won't wait until then, but we can do that next month then, okay? All right, but everybody should read through that, just so you know, familiarize yourselves with it. All right, so any other communications received by anybody for anything? No? There were a couple of communications where people complained about the leaf, you know, that one email, not email, they wrote a note on their bill when they came to settle it or spent it in, and complained that they don't believe that they should, that they don't need to have a service, they didn't want the leaf collection. And then the other complaint was about the town cleaning up Brookside. So I'm not quite sure what needs to be cleaned on Brookside, or what they specifically were talking about, but they talked about cleaning up Brookside, so just up my.
It's terrible. I live down here, it's terrible. People dump all kinds of stuff.
Okay, well, then we have to take a better look at it, I haven't driven past that direction, so.
I can see why they were.
Okay, so that kind of cleanup, then we'll have to take care of, and we'll look at. I can't, you know, I don't think other residents are doing it, I don't know who's dropping it off, so.
Probably some people that didn't get all their stuff out for the.
Rishing documents?
Well, I guess within the last ten years.
There's plants, there's branches, there's all kinds of stuff.
Throw in the woods.
You know somebody dumped it, it wasn't stuff that it's fine with.
Yeah, because somebody wore it, yeah, okay. All right, so we're cruising around, cruise down Brookside and take a look at what they have. Public comments? Yes, please.
Just a few things, okay? One of the things to keep in mind is when you have a stormwater water quality permit, your goal is protecting water quality. So when you look at ordinances in your community, when you're trying to control swimming pools or hot tubs, that often be based on protecting water quality, because you don't want that running off into the, into the stream or into the road. If you have a problem with cars parking off the street, as part of your water quality requirement, those cars, if they're there for more than seventy-two hours, you can require that they put a drip pad underneath those cars or a soap pad so that they don't, they don't spill. When you have situations where you have dumping within a certain area of your community, part of that cleanup can be required under the stormwater permit. So what it does is it gives you, like, an authority to put this in without having to explain to people why you're putting ordinances in place, that these are to protect water quality and part of your water quality permit. And if you have any issues with your ordinances and you want samples, just send me a note, and I'll find samples to send to you.
Okay, thank you, that sounds great. Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Nobody? Okay, okay. Council comments? For your hearts, though, no? Nothing, no?